Okay, we call this meeting the Tuscaloosa City Council to order. Everyone, please rise for the council prayer. Dear God, bless our proceedings tonight. Give us wisdom to know what is just and the strength to do what is right. Amen? Pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Approval of the minutes?
Make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion second, approve the minutes, voting with Councilor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Yes, minutes approved. We have proclamations tonight, and I'll ask if Ms. April Watson, Ms. Julie Waller, or Ms. Cynthia Jones are here, please, if you'll please come forward. The other two are on their way, I'm sorry, but we'll have to move right along because Ms. Watson has someplace she has to be. This is a very special proclamation, everyone. Whereas no matter how effective our government may be in serving the needs of its citizens, the soul of our city and its vitality as a place to live and work depend on the relationships of families, friends, and neighbors. And whereas strengthening those bonds is not as much in the hands of institutions or governments as it is in the hearts of the people. Individuals who volunteer to help people of all ages, races, and religions cope with illnesses, overcome hardships and barriers, adjust to social changes, and fulfill their potential. These volunteers, such as Ms. Watson standing by me tonight, are the unrecognized unsung heroes of our society. So whereas April Watson, Julie Waller, and Cynthia Jones exemplify the values of volunteer community service and are a role model to other youth as well as adults in our community by their philanthropic efforts. And whereas through the efforts and sacrifices of people like Ms. Watson, Waller, and Jones, the young adults and children in the city of Tuscaloosa will continue to flourish and be an exemplary citizen to our community. Now therefore, it be resolved on behalf of Mayor Walt Maddox and our city council, we do by honor and recognize April Watson, Julie Waller, and Cynthia Jones for their community service to the young adults in the city of Tuscaloosa. Ms. Watson?
I just want to thank y'all for recognizing us. We don't do it for show. I've been at Piggle Wiggly for 13 years now, right here next to Steelman College, and I'm there for my customers. And so anything I can do to help them to be better, do better, that's what I'm gonna do. Thank y'all again.
Thank you.
What she has done is absolutely outstanding, and the other two ladies, and what they're done for our young people, I think you've, it's just very heartwarming, and I know through your course of actions by you three, you're really changing some lives. Thank you for that.
And Mr. President, let me say to you, many of our children in District One who would possibly be in trouble or will be in the juvenile penal system have been detoured from doing that by the efforts of these three ladies, and we want to thank them for what they've done and what they do on a daily basis.
All right, any announcements by members of the council?
Yes, I have one. March 26 is Recognized Epilepsy Awareness Worldwide Day and Epilepsy Awareness Day in Tuscaloosa. So when you see the lights change on City Hall to purple, please know that it, that is on behalf of epilepsy awareness. So I just wanted to let everyone know what the lights will be changed for. Thank you.
And also, Mr. President, on March 31st at 1:30 PM, we are looking forward to meeting with our constituents, and we've created a task force to talk about the repurposing of the Benjamin Barnes YMCA current site.
Thank you both, council. Here. Councilwoman Howard and Councilor Wilson. All right, back on our agenda, Agenda item comments by citizens?
No, sir.
Okay, unfinished business?
This orders demolition of the structure at 2710 19th Street.
Move adoption.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, Mr. Verge.
Councilmember, how are y'all doing tonight?
Good.
Awesome.
This is for condemnation of 2710 19th Street condemned August 21st, 2020. The property had 41 housing code violations. This was tabled on January 10th for 60 days. The owner has been contacted, is aware of this hearing. The owner is also aware that if it's condemned and demolished by the city of Tuscaloosa, that the cost of the demolition will be charged back to the owner. The owner is here to represent the property.
Okay, owner, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
James Sealy, address 2710 19th Street.
Mr. Sealy, we're grateful and thankful to have you here tonight. We've discussed, you've been making great progress, and we're deeply concerned about the stopping of the progress. And as we talked and discussed at council meeting today, we're going to give you 30 more days to get this up to par so that we'll be able to turn you loose. So, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we table this property for 30 days?
I'll second it. Mr. Sealy, say it ain't so. Give the guy, we love to see coming in here. Say it ain't so. Give him 30 days. Can you do something in 30 days?
Oh, yeah, I can finish the outside in 30 days.
Okay, that's what we need.
All right. That's what we need.
All right, well, thank you. We have a motion, second, 30 days, voting with Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
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 And you've been given 30 days on 19th Street.
Mr. Chair, before you move on, I just wanted to recognize those other two ladies?
We're going to.
Okay, yeah.
This tentatively awards a public works contract to GFC Construction, Inc. for Sokal Park North improvements phase two.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Vote, well, this is not a public hearing. All right, so voting with Councilor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Okay, motion carries. We have Ms. Waller, Julie Waller, and Cynthia Jones, who have both come forward, who both come, who are both here now. Would you come forward to the podium, please? And Ms. Johnson, our city clerk, is going to give you your proclamations. Ju-
I'm ready.
Oh, she's still stuck? Okay, are you Cynthia?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that'd be great. You want to come, she wants to come and get. Are you Cynthia Jones? Okay. There we are. So, thank you, we read the proclamation in earlier, and thank you for what you've And we'll wait for Ms. Waller. Okay, council committee reports, there's no, been no mayor's veto, consent agenda?
This approves items A through C on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second, consent agenda, voting with Councilor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Consent agenda carries. Public hearings.
This approves a Class II lounge retail liquor license at Handle Delivery in Tuscaloosa.
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Mr. Mills?
All right, good evening, council. This is ABC Alcohol Application 23-022 for a lounge retail liquor Class II package license at 618 14th Street. This is the overview map of the location. The second picture shows where they're actually going to be located, it's going to be on the corner, right in front of the white vehicle. All necessary reports have been filed with the city clerk's office. Officer Champion will give his report, followed by the applicant to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Champion?
Okay, from March 7th, 2022, March 7th, 2023, no instance listed for that location. Heat mouth within a quarter mile. Top crimes, we had it listed within that quarter mile.
Any questions for Officer Champion? All right. Is the applicant here? If you come forward and give your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is David Kinlarski, and I'm the site manager for Handle Delivery, and I'm very happy to answer any of all questions.
Can you tell me how your business will operate?
Yes, we are a delivery service. We currently offer food, non-alcoholic beverages, and household essentials all over Tuscaloosa. We are hoping to expand into alcoholic beverages as well as tobacco, and we were, the way we operate is through primarily student delivery, hiring local students to run operations using electric scooters, which then mainly operate around campus.
Oh, this is primarily on campus?
Around, yes, around student housing primarily.
I think one of the questions before with, I think it was GoPuff, was how do you check IDs?
So there's a two-step authentication system. First off, we have an in-app system where they're required to upload their identification, and it is then verified. Then, once again, once we actually arrive on location, we then double-check to make sure that the ID matches, to make sure it's legitimate, and we make sure that they're in a sober and acceptable state and are able to receive it and are not breaking any laws or rules of ABC.
Anyone have any further questions for the applicant?
So this is something, this is something that was asked to me. So when they make their delivery, when you make the delivery, you only give it to the person whose ID has been verified on your app?
Correct. They cannot even order without first verifying their ID, and then, once we arrive, the ID has to match what is already on the app. So the uploaded ID must match the ID in the possession of the person.
Can your app detect false IDs?
Yes, and we will reject any false IDs that come our way.
How will you know they're false?
We have a, we go through the authentication system of checking for the common misconceptions that come with false IDs.
What is that authentication system? Is that a, is that some technology system, or is that, what is it?
Yes, we upload it, and we make sure it matches the common requirements for each state's ID.
Make sure it matches the common requirement for each state?
Yes, for example, I have a Wisconsin ID, and so it has certain requirements. For example, there's a small holographic photo of myself. Each ID, as you know, has certain things that are designed to make them harder to duplicate and forge. So we look for those in the initial scan, and we, once it passes, we then also double-check because some things are able to pass that scanner. So we do everything in our ability to make sure that alcohol does not, or tobacco does not get into the hands of minors.
I'm the councilman for District Four, which is where you're going to be located. You're back in the old Parkview Center back there?
Yes, sir.
So in a minute, I'm fixing to vote yes. All right, welcome to the district, but I'm gonna tell you at the same time, you're servicing an area where three-quarters of the population are arithmetically unable to buy alcohol legally. So be warned, okay? Welcome to the district, I hope you do great, but understand, if it's becoming a problem, it'll be dealt with, and there's others that can testify to that. So, now, who was it, Bo, just opened a brewery over there too, right, in here across from you?
Yes, sir, just next door.
Okay, well, I hope y'all turn around, Parkview Center, it once was a shining place, and I hope you bring it back to a level of business luster. So welcome to the district.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak for or against this application? Being none, voting with Councilor Lanier?
Yes.
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 And application approved, best of luck to you.
Thank you all.
Good luck.
Clerk?
This will approve a restaurant retail liquor license at Black Warrior Events in Tuscaloosa.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, Mr. Mills?
Okay, council, this is ABC Alcohol Application 23-023 for a restaurant retail liquor located at 501 and 601 Rice Mine Road. This is the overview map of the location. Next picture shows that it'll be going into Cypress Inn, Old Cypress Inn Restaurant. All necessary reports have been filed with the city clerk office. Officer Champion will give his report, followed by the applicant to answer any questions.
Officer Champion?
From March 10th of 2021 to March, it should be March 10th, 2022, to March 10th of 2023, we had no instance listed for that location. Heat mouth within a quarter mile. Only cause we had for a theft in that quarter mile.
Okay, thank you.
So Officer Champion, wasn't it?
Yes.
Never mind.
Okay.
Okay, will the applicant or his representative or both come forward and give your name and address for the record?
Jeffrey Harless, 1060 Savannah Circle.
Is, is this one event?
Sir?
Is this one event?
No, sir. Acquired the property a month or so ago, and we're going to continue to operate the pavilion until I find an operator to come in and take over the restaurant.
So you're planning on reopening the Cypress Inn as some type of restaurant?
Yes, sir, when we find the right person.
Well, I think you've probably made a whole lot of people very, very happy.
Yes, sir, we have.
And I almost cried looking at that sign in that empty parking lot.
We're, we plan to find the right operator, we're currently bringing the property back up to its former glory, and we're very excited about it.
Well, best of luck to you, absolutely. Thank you.
And I hope, you know, Officer Champion, how long ago was it? We had a running gun battle down there, was that two years ago? So Jeffrey, just, again, I, there are a lot of people who are going to be very happy to hear that the possibility is coming back, but I think that was the least to the pavilion.
Yes.
So choose your customers wisely.
Very much so.
Okay?
Congratulations. Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak for or against this application? All right, voting with Councilor Howard?
Yes.
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 Yes. Application approved, best of luck to you.
Correct.
Good to see you, Jason. Clerk?
This adopts zoning amendment number 1505.
Move adoption.
Second.
Have a motion, second, Mr. Pons.
All right, TCIDA is petitioning to rezone approximately 39.85 acres located south of 9511 Highway 82 West, west of 9200 Energy Lane and adjacent to the existing Tuscaloosa County Industrial Park from R1 to MH. It's currently not in the city limits, and they are annexing into the city as well. So here it is on the map, you can see the aerial there, it's a vacant piece of property at this time. Aerial directly adjacent to the railroad. They are requesting to rezone to MH for an economic development project and water and sewer service with the city, which includes a rail yard, and they can speak more on that because they are here. It does conform to framework, so 2021 framework identifies this as industrial, which allows for this type of operation. You can see the Future Land use character map here showing that, and then the allowed uses in the MH zoning district, and planning commission unanimously recommended approval for this.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
All right, thank you, Mr. Pons. Anybody have any questions at this time for that? Okay, the applicant, come forward, please, and give us your name and address for the record, or applicants?
Justice Smith, TCIDA, 2204 University Boulevard. As Mr. Pons said, that we're requesting this rezoning for the development of a rail yard. This will enhance the existing service for their, for Watco's customers, as well as provide additional capacity for new customers. This will also simultaneously alleviate pressure points for the existing rail yard in West Tuscaloosa, alleviating any potential safety concerns, and then allow Watco to continue to deliver superior service. I have also Mr. Cody Gilland here with the rail yard to answer any questions that you may have about the project.
Good evening, Cody Gilland, Alabama Southern Railroad, I'm not sure of our address.
Okay, all right. Anybody have any questions from the council?
How many employees do you think you'll have?
In the beginning phases, it'll be eight added to our operation.
All right, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak for or against this application? Being none, thank you.
Seeing, okay, seeing that there's no comments, this is my second time being able to, you know, be able to see this agenda item, and I do just want to say, like, seriously, just today, someone sent me a message asking me about the train tracks near Pico, so I don't know if this will alleviate any of that traffic, and it's usually two crossings, but will this help there too?
It will limit, you know, that's a little bit outside of where our existing yard is.
Okay, not the same tracks?
There's still going to be trade service there.
Okay.
But it should eliminate a small amount of it.
Yeah, but you know, from the last time I saw you guys, I'm excited about this. I'm happy about it, I hope the community is paying attention because this has been one of their requests in parts of my district, that the, you know, the horns and the whistles or whatever, and, you know, the trains being on the tracks, that that's the lesson. So I'm happy to see that, you know, I hope it's passed once more.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? In voting with Councilor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Mr. President, I am recusing from this vote.
Yes.
Motion carries. Clerk?
This adopts zoning amendment number 1506.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, Mr. Pons?
All right, so this one, Rob's Investments, is petitioning to rezone approximately 3.78 acres located in 9200 Highway South, Highway 69 South, within the existing Hillcrest Gardens subdivision from R1 to BN. And this one also is currently not in city limits, this is a pre-zoning, and then it'll come to you for annexation next week. So you can see here on the map, this is the piece of property that is requesting to be pre-zoned to BN, and then the existing Hillcrest subdivision is just to the left there on your, on the aerial. You can see that it is directly adjacent to Highway 69 South and currently vacant. The petition is to rezone to BN due to it being economically infeasible to build out the rest of Hillcrest Gardens. This is a site plan that was submitted with the rezoning. They're not held to this site plan, but it is a concept plan that they have presented in what they are proposing to do here, which would be kind of office spaces, things like that. An applicant can speak more on that. And they are proposing to put, and they are proposing to put some sort of fence or something like that as well.
Some sort of what?
Some sort of opaque fence as well, along that boundary with Hillcrest Gardens. This does conform to framework. Framework identifies this specific piece of property as corridor commercial, typically located along major corridors, allows for car-oriented development. You can see that here on the Future Land use character map. These are the allowed uses in that zoning district, in the BN zoning district. This was not, this is a typo, not unanimously recommended for approval, it was recommended for approval at a vote of six to three.
Okay, any questions at this time from Mr. Pons? There may be in a little while after.
Is this the same developer that originally developed the property, or has it changed hands twice?
I believe that there's a potential buyer, so it's going to be changing hands. I'm not sure if the current owner is the one that has always owned the property since the-
Okay, well, I guess they're coming up.
Yes.
I think I have a question. So when the property changes hands, what changes with the new property owner as far as any covenants or any restrictions on the property?
Nothing, not related to the rezoning or the annexation.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Pons. Will the applicant please come forward, or his, or her representative, Mr. Winters?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Thank you for having me tonight. I think we have a short little presentation, one of my shortest of all time, but I want to thank you, first introduce you to the folks here, this is Dr. and Mrs. Pruthy. Dr. Pruthy was a longtime veterinarian in Tuscaloosa, and his bride here operates the wonderful Indian restaurant. So, if you ever go there, and then the rest of our team is back here, we have Jordan Marshall Architec and Adam Ingram from TTL, they've worked with us on this project as well. So we're here tonight, I don't know if you can get that, floor is up. Okay, I gotta go forward here, okay. Hi, Tech, I'm getting old, forgive me. There we go, okay. So, we're here tonight because in 1996, there was a pud created, subdivision to be built in phases. The first, second, and third phases were platted and built, property in the fourth phase in red is not yet platted. Covenant provided that the phase need not be built. So the plan here is to annex it into R1 and change zoning from R1 to BN, and BN is what the staff suggested we do on this. Go forward here, and you can see, and you, Ms. Howard, you already asked about the covenants, but let me explain the covenants to you. So in the covenants that are recorded in the subdivision, and every time they're on notice for the public and anybody who buys a home in there, number 27 of the covenant says, "In the event that governmental regulations or economic conditions make the completion of development or of additional phases thereupon impossible, unprofitable to the clearance, or unreasonable, then the declaration may at their option terminate the effect of those restrictions and such for a property for which a map or plat has not actually been recorded." So now there's not a plat or a map of this, and you can see down below, I highlighted the parts here, governmental regulations or economic conditions, or completion of the development or additional phases thereof. So in accordance with that, we have to file a notice of termination in accordance with the covenants with the probate judge. And as you can see here, back on 11/29/2022, we filed this notice with the probate court in accordance with the covenants, and basically saying the current economic and market conditions make it unreasonable and financially infeasible for the owner to build the homes in Phase Four. So we filed this notice, and then after that, we held two meetings with the homeowners association. Now, the key, whole key here is this, the question becomes, is it economically feasible to build houses at this time down there? So what we did was, we talked to numerous builders and developers, we talked to folks who are economists in the area of building houses, and we looked at the houses that have been sold over the past several years, from December of 2020 to December of 2022, and we looked at the size of the square feet and the amount sold, and the dollar per square foot it was to buy that house at that time. Now, it's very interesting, one of my great parts of my job is I always get to learn interesting stuff. So if you build a house that's 1,500 square feet, it actually costs more per square foot to build a 1,500 square foot house than it does to bill, cost to build a 200 square foot house, 2,000 square foot house. Now, why is that? Because you'll probably have the same number of bedrooms, the same number of bathrooms, the same number of kitchen appliances, all the expensive stuff is going to be the same number, but the rooms are going to be larger. And in theory, and in practicality, the cost of the wood is usually less than the cost of all the other things that go into the house. So the important things to take away from this chart are that the highest dollar square foot sale was for a 1,688 square foot house at $142.12 square foot, and that was last July, okay? Now, the builders that we've talked to, as you'll see in up here, the average market price for all those houses is $124.41. That's the average market price of those 50 or so houses in the subdivision. The builders told us to build a garden home now would cost us $165 a square foot at least. Now, when you buy the house and the garden home now at $124.41, that includes the land, the realtor, okay? Everything that goes into the house, the profit of the builder and everything, that's all built in there. When you build a new house down there at $165 a square foot, that doesn't include the cost of the infrastructure, the cost of the land, the cost of the realtor, the overhead of the builder. That's just the actual wood, pipes, metal, cabinets, everything that goes into that house. So remember $165 a square foot, and remember $142 a square foot. Now, the cost involved in building a home, you have the cost of the construction loan. When you buy that used house, you don't have that. You have cost of infrastructure. When you buy that used house, you don't have it. And the other cost of construction, concrete, lumber, roofing, plumbing- And the other cost of construction, concrete, lumber, roofing, plumbing, electrical, air conditioning, especially in Alabama, appliances and windows. Over the last several years, all those have gone through the roof, forty percent higher in the last year and a half. Now, the overhead and profit for the builder, overhead is what it costs them to operate their business, which is usually twelve percent. And they usually take between ten and twelve percent of profit on it. We kept the low point. And a realtor costs six percent. You got to pay a realtor six percent. Now, the other thing that's key in this for everybody to remember is, two years ago, you could go out and get a mortgage for under three percent. Now, they're at seven percent, and I'm going to show you what that does. But the higher mortgage rates make, make it so people can't afford the same houses. Now, why are all these costs going up? Well, the costs are going up because of inflation. You've all heard about it. You've all seen at the grocery store when you buy a gallon of milk. So, and there's also increased labor costs. Tuscaloosa County in January had two point three percent. So you got to pay more for the labor. There's smaller talent pool after the Great Recession. The baby boomers are aging out, and the thing about that is I did not realize this, one out of five construction labors is over fifty years old. I don't know how they do it. I'm falling apart. I couldn't do it. And the competition from other industries, especially in Tuscaloosa, in terms of Mercedes suppliers, Mercedes, logistics suppliers, great jobs, big benefits. Then we had all the COVID-nineteen pandemic restrictions that screwed up our market. We had supply chain disruption. Then we had the war in Ukraine, which raised prices even more for oil and gas. And then we had the huge increase in interest rates. So if you look at this graph, this is from the Federal Reserve Board of St. Louis. They put this out monthly. And in April of twenty twenty, the price index, the Consumer Price Index was a two sixteen. Now it's a three eighteen. It peaked last July, and it's come down a little, but it's going back up again. That's why they say the Fed may raise interest rates again. But that means the cost of this is up over forty percent. To build a house, just the stuff that goes in the house is up forty percent. Now, when you buy that used house, the infrastructure, all the sewer, the engineering, the pipes, the electrical, all that's put in there. That's why I have Adam here, because Adam does this all the time for subdivisions all around the city, and all around the country, actually. And TTL figured out the cost of the infrastructure for building nineteen houses in there would be a million dollars. A million dollars. So the original plan on this was to have sixteen lots. Well, we tried to change it a little bit to put nineteen lots on it so we could lower the cost of infrastructure. But the first thing we are going to have to pay to build on here is fifty-two thousand dollars a lot just to build the infrastructure. So here's what happens. This is a lot of graphs, but I'll give you the simple on this, okay? Basically, if you want to build a house at a hundred and sixty-five dollars a square foot, okay? You can take everything out. We did all these different charts and ran all the different numbers. We do all of this, and we take that out. And what we're left is this. It's not feasible, and it's unreasonable to new homes in, at current sales price. Okay, why? Well, if you were to take the cost, it would be a hundred and sixty-five dollars to build that house. And we took the average-sized house, okay? The average-sized house, the cost of the house itself would be two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Now, if we go back, okay, we, that's, that's what it starts with, two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. That's the latest sale. So now we're at two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars without, without the land, the infrastructure, and everything else. So first, that's taking out the construction is two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. If the builder built it for free and didn't get any profit or any overhead, just built it for free out of his own goodwill, it would cost two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Then if we take the lot price out, and we don't even charge anything, Mr. Dr. Pruthy gives the land away, and we add the infrastructure in, okay? And we actually cut it by half. It's supposed to be fifty-two. We cut it by half to twenty-six thousand dollars, okay? And we added that into the lot price, then the total would be two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, which would give you a hundred and forty-two dollars a square foot, which is more than now. But if you go back in and you add everything back in, the overhead and profit, the infrastructure price, you don't add, you know, you add twenty-five thousand dollars in for a lot price, you can't build it. You will not make any money. You will lose, lose money, okay? You will absolutely lose money. And even worse so, if you look at this, this is what happened to the mortgage rates, okay? And the mortgage rates, you have, in twelve thirty of twenty-one, the mortgage rates averaged three point one one percent. So if you had a thirty-year mortgage on a three hundred thousand dollar house, that was twelve hundred and eighty-three dollars a month, okay? When we did this with the planning commission, it was at six point four two. Now it's at six point seven three percent. And I want you to think about this. A monthly mortgage on a three hundred thousand dollar house at six point seven three percent is one thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars. That is literally an increase of six hundred and fifty-nine dollars a month coming out of your pocket just to pay the bank. Okay, but when you take that money out of your pockets to pay the bank, you've got to make that money. That's after taxes. So what you really have to do for that is, you really have to make a thousand dollars more a month in order to pay that increased mortgage. Now, think about this. When you have to raise the prices of these houses, what happens? Your taxes go up because your tax assessment's going to be higher. That's more assessment. When you buy insurance for this house, what happens? The house is worth more, okay? Your insurance goes up. So this steps on each other, and not only do you have to have the extra mortgage amount and the extra tax amount, the extra insurance amount, then you've got to have another thirty-three percent above that or twenty-five percent above that to make that. Now, how many people do you know right now that got a thousand dollar a month raise in the last year? Or a fifteen hundred dollar a month rate? There's not a lot of them. So that's why the mortgage rates have such a negative impact on housing. So we had two meetings with the neighborhood, because we believe, and I think I've shown you here, that the economics show that you can't build houses down there. And when I was with the planning commission, Mr. Rumsey Carter asked me all these Harvard Economic Law School questions or something. And we had this rapporté, and I'm glad you don't want to hear that because that was very difficult to understand sometime between us. But we had the first meeting, and these were the issues. They wanted a grassy area behind the homes in the middle maintained. So we did that, and I can open this up. We did that right here, okay? They didn't want the dumpster pad adjacent to the neighborhood. The dumpster pad was here. We moved it up here. They wanted the dumpster on the eastern half of the property. That's what that is. They want directional lighting that does not shine into the neighborhood. So all the lighting would either go downward like we require it or this way. It wouldn't go back towards them. They wanted a buffer between the neighborhood and the development, including fence, trees, and bushes. We did that. And they, we said this will be a cementatious fence, a non-wooden fence, and we'll have these trees, and I'll show you a picture of that. And they didn't want any connection between here. Now, these strange things here, these little different, these are a little different. It's not clearing out. Right in here, as you can see right here, this red line, this red line, that is a turnaround for the trucks. So we said we would do all that. The second meeting, they just said, "Don't build any houses," okay? Now, all their issues that they're describing here were reflected of the problems they've had with their neighbor Publix. Trucks arriving twenty-four hours a day, trucks unloading at night, loading and unloading of dumpsters at night. And you can see where the trucks are for Publix, and the dumpsters are right here, okay? And all the trucks coming back in here, that's a huge facility. Those are eighteen-wheelers. Those are big dumpsters. This is going to be a little thing. This ain't going to have those big things back there. The dumpster will be up front, okay? So you have that. Wooden privacy fence, and, and Publix has a wooden privacy fence here that the neighbors say is terrible and disrepair. And then it was not taken care of the property, so there are animals and pests coming in, okay? So we've tried to address all those. And you can see here the picture of what it'll look like from our property. And then this is the non-sementation, this is the non-wooden cementation fence. And I asked Jordan, Mr. Mark Beck, to bring this for you so you can see what it's like. That's, that's the kind of fence. It's like a hardy board or cement board, and you're not going to have to worry about that falling apart or coming apart. And that's the kind of stuff that's in between. And then the front of it, it'd be nicely done. And then the most important thing for y'all is this actually comport. This actually meets the Tuscaloosa work plan, okay? This is what's in your plan. And that's what Mr. Rumsey really gave me a hard time. I said, "Well, y'all adopted this plan, not me, Mr. Rumsey." So, you know, he said, "Okay, okay." So here's where it comes in. This would be, this is that purple strip right in between here, and that would be BN, which is in the city's plan. Okay, now, the last thing I wanted to mention to you was, that's just in case they have some other questions, you have some other questions. Uh, excuse me. Over the last week, last five, six days, we have worked diligently on a daily basis with the Neighborhood Association and with the Board of the Neighbor, HOA Association, I think Mr. Pates back there, to try and agree to something where they wouldn't oppose this. We actually offered to put all these things in writing, and we did. We got an eight-page document together. It was all in writing. And unfortunately, the Board can't agree to it. So I don't know why, but the simple fact is that we have done everything. We have told them what we would do. We have offered to put it in writing what we would do. The city is not going to let us do wrong to begin with. And there's just simply no way to make these houses, build garden homes down here at this time. There's just no way it can happen. So the covenants let us do it. Numbers show that we literally can't do it the way the coven, just as the covenants require. We're following the city's plan, and we've offered to put all their concerns in writing and address all their concern. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any. Yes, sir.
Two question now. The original developer, has the property already been sold?
The property went into bankruptcy originally, okay? And then it was bought out of bankruptcy. Okay, Mr. Dr. Pruthy had some, some, um, Dr. Pruthy bought it, Dr. Pruthy's son bought it out of a bankruptcy. He's the father. That's Rob, Rob Pruthy.
Yeah, what was the vote at, at planning and zoning?
I think it was six-three?
Six-three.
Six-three.
Yeah.
And, and for the people that were opposed to this, what was the main issue?
Uh, those are the folks that are kind of usually always against anything that would touch upon a neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm talking about on the group, though.
On the group.
On the planning commission, what was their main objection? Did any of them say, "I'm voting no because..."
Not, not really. I don't remember that. Y'all may remember that as God or somebody. I just don't remember. I will tell you this, though. One of the concerns has always been that this is going to be business next to a neighborhood. And I would submit to this council that in the towns of North River, which is probably the city's most successful neighborhood in the last ten years, there is literally, um, you know, commercial things going in there. And it's the same thing across the way, you know, other things have gone in there. So everybody's always against change. Uh, I just came back from Texas where there are every neighborhood there, the largest growing city in the nation, every neighborhood there has residential like this, and then strip malls or bigger things out in front of it along the main drags like this, main highways like this. So, you know, I would think that someday when there's a CVS over there and a coffee shop, the folks in the neighborhood may just want to have a door put through there so they could come and enjoy the coffee shop and call it CVS, or even a liquor store. So, uh, but thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions, Mr. Winters, at this time?
Brian, do you know, I presume there's no leases you haven't, any, you don't know who'd come in there?
No, we, we don't have anything yet because everybody says, you know, we're not going to do anything because you can't do anything yet. Nobody's going to spend time and money on something. But, I mean, this is a similar plan. This is what we've talked about for a long time, doing this down here. This is what seems to work in this area. You know, we're not going to, I mean, it's, it's the city, so you can't just go in and put in a tattoo parlor or a strip club or anything like that. That's not going to work. You know that. So, um, so I, you know, I, it's not like a Publix. There's not going to be twenty-four, I mean, you know, eighteen-wheelers coming in twenty-four hours a day.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
And if this, and if, and if there, if the neighbors do bring up some other neighborhoods in the area, I have three slides to address those questions.
I know we have plenty in the neighborhood that will like to address the council, but first, Mr. Parsons, you'll come up on behalf of Hillcrest Gardens, please, sir?
Let me ask a quick question of OCA and zoning. You don't, we, you, don't we typically annex it in first and then later change it from R one to BN? Are they typically combined as the same item?
No, they're two separate items that get two separate approvals from you guys ultimately. But we pre-zone, we put pre-zone language in so that when it's annexed, it doesn't annex in as R one, which is our most restrictive district. Because every, every...
Hadn't the normal practice been to bring it in as R one first?
No, sir.
No? Alright, thank you.
Cam Parsons, eighteen oh four fourth street. I'm here speaking on behalf of the neighborhood. The picture that you can see up there, uh, there's approximately sixty-some houses. I'm going to give you a little bit more history and correct some stuff. First of all, that's a very difficult act. I got an MBA out of business school, and I got lost after the first slide on the economics. Back in nineteen ninety-six, and I dug this out of the planning, uh, planning office, when the original developers were applying for a PUD. And at that time, the PUD consisted of all the house lots that you see there and the other fifteen lots that Brian has outlined. And, uh, the, the pitch at that time, and, and, and the reason I'm, I'm, I'm going to read this because it's twofold. Number one, because it represents what these people thought they were buying. But number two, developers come before you. I've been here for developers much more than I've been for neighborhoods. I think y'all know me, know that. The problem is that the people who come in and sell this to you on day one never end up, very rarely, I don't say never, very rarely end up being the actual developer. They flip it. They sell it. They market it. And it appears to me that that's sort of what Dr. Pruthy's doing here. I guess Dr. Pruthy is Rob's LLC. The corporate documents and Secretary of State don't show that they are him. I think it's probably some relative. For Hillcrest Gardens LLC, which was the original developer, of which Dr. Pruthy was one of the members. There was a doctor in town, and there was a builder in town back in nineteen ninety-six. Hillcrest Gardens is a planned unit development which will contain eighty-five units. These garden homes will vary in size with a minimum of fourteen hundred square feet. We expect some of the garden homes to be as large as two thousand square feet. We anticipate the price to start around fifteen, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for our basic plan. Lot cheaper back then, obviously. It's our intention to sell all of these garden homes, and we anticipate a population of two people per unit. The common area will be managed by a corporation formed by the principles of the development. And of course, that's the HOA now, because HOA takes over at some point. Hillcrest Gardens will have an extensive set of protective and restrictive covenants, which is intended to protect and preserve the value of the home and owners of this PUD. I've got a copy of it if you want to see it. Alright. So back in two thousand and fourteen, well, first of all, Hillcrest Gardens sold the property in question to RP and RP Enterprises, Inc. Hillcrest Gardens LLC developed lots in the back. This commercial part out here was cut out. It was never planted for lots intentionally. And in two thousand and fourteen, First United Security Bank foreclosed the mortgage that RP and RP, RP is the first and second initials of Dr. Pruthy and his wife's names, so that, that, that's where the name of the entity came from. So it was foreclosed. It was two thousand and fourteen.
Two thousand.
Okay, so I'm going to bring this all back to you, but we're going to talk about the restrictive covenants that Brian spent so much time on because the restrictive covenants do say that the declarations, the declarations, and in that case, the declarations where the original developer of the subdivision was Hillcrest, okay? Not Rob's investment. Alright, so two thousand and fourteen, First United Security Bank forecloses a mortgage. It's bought by an LLC company here in town by the name of Jam Investments LLC, not by Dr. Pruthy's son, not by, by, by Dr. Pruthy. not by Dr. Pruthy's son, not by, by Dr. Pruthy. Later on, Jam's investment deeded the property to Rob's Investments in 2014. So, it was like four or five months later. Rob's Investment is your petitioner here today. They're the ones that's asking that the property be annexed into the city. I will drop back a little bit. I've been before the planning commission a couple of times prior to this. In 2015, they tried to annex the property, planning commission turned them down. 2017, they tried to annex the property, the, the planning commission turned them down. All right. The restrictive covenants state, "All lots in the planned unit development," the PUD, the whole thing including these 15 lots that are in red, "shall be used for residential purposes only and no structure shall be used for commercial purposes." All right. So, with their very able counsel, they came up with a scheme to figure out, "Well, what are we going to do to get rid of these restrictive covenants? Because these neighbors have blocked us from annexing this property into the city for six years." Keep in mind, and we're going to talk about the economic part of this, Dr. Pruthy has had since 1996, except for the short period of time when he didn't own it in one company or another, to develop townhomes or garden homes on the property. Today, he's before you whining because he says he can't make any money on building homes. 27 years after the development started, okay? It's not your fault that he's waited this long and they've waited this long intentionally because he's never intended on building homes there. All these homeowners were misled. They believed, and, and you, you got to understand that this subdivision was built in phases. There was, there was four different phases. And every time they built a phase, they would file a subdivision plat and it was approved. The city approved. No plat was ever submitted for this. So, I thought this is really, really sharp, the way they did this. So, they prepared this notice of termination and recorded in the probate office as, as, as Brian said. The problem is that if they can do what they did, Rob's Investments, who is not the declarant, the declarant doesn't exist anymore. The only way restrictive covenants that apply to this property can be approved or terminated, any amendment to it, has to be done by a majority of the owners of the subdivision. So, the 62 or so lots would have to approve, uh, prove it, that really a total of, I think it was 85, in the original subdivision plan that was submitted and proved as part of the PUD, if you're following me. All right, so, not being the declarant is required by the strict covenants. They, they filed this termination, okay? Bear with me. If they're allowed to do that, then any one of these people, and people that live in the subdivision and who stand up. Any one of these people can amend the restrictive covenants and claim, and claim that they can terminate. I'm not talking about the economic part. I'm talking about the pure lack of legal standing to do what they did. So, anyway, they've got all this nice fancy paperwork, it looks really good, until you start thinking, "Wait a minute, who is the declarant?" Okay? I can't cite you an Alabama case on this. There are a few cases in, in the country. And, uh, I'm not, I'm not going to cite you the case, but there's one, there's several cases out of the state of Illinois. Here's the bottom line. There's another part of this too that I didn't mention. We believe, I believe, and unfortunately I was out of town, I couldn't go to the P&amp;Z meeting to talk about the legalities of, of the PUD amendment. So, as part of their package to get where they're here today, they filed a petition to amend the PUD to remove these residential formerly planned residential lots out of the PUD. And I can't find any place in, in the city ordinance that allows them to remove a property from the PUD. That's FYI. So, that's another reason why we're opposing this. The PUD is not for you today, that was decided by P&amp;Z. We're here today only on annexation. So, on the behalf of the homeowner association, they oppose the annexation. Um, and, uh, but if it is, if you do approve the annexation, certainly they do not want it to be H, they want it to be BN. And, and yes, I want to thank Dr. Pruthy and Mr. Winter for working with me since Friday to try to come up with a document that would give some assurance, some assurance, that they would get the protections that they need to preserve the character of their neighborhood. And he, and he's truly spoke. There's a real problem with the Publix, the 24-hour delivery and so on. And that's, there's noise problems, there's light problems, there's garbage smell, there's rodents, whatever, okay? Believe it or not. That goes back to what I said earlier. People come in here and make their case and, and, and sell each of you on, "We're going to do this, we're going to do that, man, and we're not going to hurt the neighborhood." The neighborhoods come up here for the very reason that these people are opposing this now because the, the developments get built and then when they call the city and say, "Can you do something about this?" "No, that's a civil matter, you'll have to deal with yourself." So, this isn't, this isn't the towns of North River. These people don't have $50,000, $60,000, $75,000 to file a lawsuit to enforce or to stop nuisance and things like that that are intruding upon their privacy and the use of their property. So, I'm going to yield to, uh, Mr. Pate, Bill Pate, not related to my former employer. One last thing from Brian's, uh, presentation. I'm sure you will note that he didn't say anything about how much the infrastructure for the commercial development would cost. We just talked, he talked about, tried, and tried to sell the reason why or the justification for the non-declarant to be able to terminate the restrictive covenant. You're going to have those costs, those same infrastructure costs, or maybe even more for commercial development. The cost to build the total square footage for that building is going to be more. So, we didn't hear about that. But I, I want to leave the, leave this one thought with you before I sit down. 1996, 2023, why hadn't he built the houses? He hadn't because he didn't want to. He wants to be able to come up here and, uh, have a commercial development. And I, I don't doubt he can make more money with commercial development than he can residential. Thank you for your time.
So, Mr. Parsons, I, I have a couple of questions. You, you talked about the declarant.
Yep.
Would not that status transfer? When, if I buy this enterprise and development from a seller, don't all those statuses transfer with that purchase?
Nope. No, and for the very reason I just told you. When Mr. Pate bought his lot, if that logic was true, okay? If that was the law, Mr. Pate then became the declarant for his house in his lot.
Okay, and another question. You, you talked about removing the property out of the PUD, I guess. You said there was no city ordinance.
I couldn't find one.
You said nothing permitting it. Is there anything forbidding it?
I couldn't find, well, there is one code section that I found that addressed removal or the change of a type of structure within a PUD, but I could not find a specific ordinance that says you can't amend a PUD, but I didn't find one either that said you can amend a PUD. And I may be wrong, I may be missing something, but that's something I think, uh, city attorney's office might want to look in, in reviewing the ordinance in the future.
Can you amend the PUD?
I, that I don't know off the top of my head, but I do, but I do want to, I, I would like to interject and, and, and frame the issue for, for this law body a little bit, at the risk of three lawyers talking being too, too many. Both Mr. Parsons and, and Mr. Winter make excellent points and excellent arguments for what is obviously a complicated decision and a complicated case. I do want to make sure we're clear that this body does not determine the legality of the covenants, whether or not it is actually impossible to go forward or uneconomical. That's certainly informative, it's certainly something you can consider, but y'all determine whether or not you think in your best interest as policymakers, this annexation and rezoning is proper in this situation, not whether or not these covenants are legally enforceable or, or could, could be dropped.
Nobody's asking you to do that. The discussion of the covenants is relevant because the covenants specifically say residential purposes only and only residential buildings. And the way they are trying to circumvent that is to terminate the covenants as they, as they apply to that. You don't have to, you don't have to agree with me that it's, uh, that they improperly did that, that they can't do it because they aren't the declarant. You know, look at the picture, look at all the houses up there. All that was supposed to have houses on it since 1996. Thank you.
Okay, this, well, at this time, what I'd like to do, I know everyone that's here from Hillcrest Gardens has, has shown, shown how many of you are here. So, would like to give you an opportunity to come and speak for or against this annexation. And if you'll please keep your comments to a very minimum and try not to repeat each other because I think I know we're all, that you're, you know, all opposed. But if you have a spokesperson, or we're certainly going to allow anybody, everybody who wants to speak to speak, but if you can come and give your name and address for the record at this time, any residents or anyone concerning this, um, annexation or proposed annexation. Yes?
Can, can I real fast, Mr. Turner, just one more clarification? This, this will come before the body at a later time for annexation. This is the pre-zoning only.
That, that's what I meant to say, yeah, absolutely.
Yes, sir, my name is Bill Pate. I live at 1098 Wisteria Drive within this planned unit development. I work for Alabama Department of Transportation. My wife is a teacher at Brookwood Middle School, eighth grade English teacher, in case we... In case I don't do my grammar right, I'll be in trouble if she's watching this. Now, I wanted to bring up some of the things that our attorney talked about. And one of the things that we're asking you to consider is the impact that this change will have on the lives of 69 residences, residents there. And usually it's two or more people in each home. All of these people bought these houses thinking that and believing and having representations made to them that this property would be developed as a PUD, that these properties were subdivided and would not be, there would not be commercial development down there. They already deal with the Publix, which is next to them, and there's been problems with the Publix. One of the things is the maintenance of the things Publix agreed to do to protect the neighborhood, which they did, but there are maintenance questions with them that have come up and have not been satisfactorily resolved. One of the things we wanted to do when we entered into some discussions with them through our attorney was to get a clear agreement on maintenance of the things that we were asking for. And they, they gave us a list of the things that we were asking for and they agreed to do them. They came in here tonight and told you that we wouldn't agree to anything, and that's not exactly true. I have a copy here of the eight-page agreement they sent to us, and it takes eight pages to tell us that the lights will be pointed away and we'll have a fence and no public access through there, those five or six things. But then they have three pages of things we give up, like, one, the right to sue them about anything. Two, we give up any right to ever have a jury trial on anything. We, we waive any questions we have about anything they or any of their successors or our sons do. They have so much, and I'd be glad to hand these to you and let you look at the things they put in there. It's like they're attorneys from New York City and, and, and we don't know how to read or something. They put all the stuff in there and it's amazing. And that's what we object to. Most of the things that we're asking for, the planning commission staff had already told them they needed to do. And we appreciate that. But that could be changed. They don't have a plan for what they're going to do here. They're going to put, probably, we suspect, they're going to put this on the market and do their best to sell it to a developer that has the money to come in and do something with it. And that worries us because if, if they promise to do something and then they sell it to a developer, they may not be willing to do all those things if we can't get a covenant to run with the land.
Thank you.
That's why we hired our attorney to get that resolved.
Thank you, and you're out of time. We have three minutes limit.
Is my three minutes up?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for that, and now I want to, and next person who'd like to come speak, I will like to reiterate, I was, I mean, I was corrected. This is the rezoning, that's before us right now, and the annexation will come later, correct? Yes, sir, name and address, please?
My name is Jack Robbins. I live at 1150 Periwinkle Drive in Hillcrest Gardens. Uh, I do have an MBA, and I'd like to point out one glaring error in the Rob's Investment analysis. Uh, sales of 20-year-old houses can't be used to estimate the appropriateness of making money when you're building new houses in the area. Typically, a new home of similar size would have a 25% to 35% advantage over an existing home. So, that's a faulty analysis. One thing that I would say here is that the property owners have had many years to build homes themselves, the various owners, to sell the property to somebody else who could complete Phase Four, to enter into agreement with another developer. They chose not to do any of those things. Now, they're asking you to put their financial benefit ahead of the welfare of the 69 households in our neighborhood. The city council has always been cognizant of the need to preserve the quality of life and character of the neighborhoods in our communities. And there are many other areas that Bill stores and other businesses in the South Tuscaloosa area. I think it's consistent with those facts to deny the rezoning request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Anyone else like to speak at this time? Okay, and again, we, we did get the numbers of all you were here, and, and thank you all for being here tonight. Uh, before we close the public hearing, I'll give you Mr. Winter. Yes, sir. And then, Mr. Parsons.
Don't let Mr. Parsons come up again, oh, man.
Well, you said you were from, attorneys from New York, but you're close, New Jersey.
Well, first I'd like to thank Mr. Parsons because he's, he has worked hard at this and Mr. Pate has too. Let me address the agreement issue first. First of all, we actually, Mr. Parsons reached out to me the middle last week when I was out of town and we started working on this. We worked over the weekend, we did do about a copy. And, um, as you know, legal agreements are never easy, especially in Alabama because they have a lot of things and your council will tell you that need to be done. It's called boilerplate and you have it in all your agreements. Okay, and so what we wanted to do was make sure that after we agreed to do all these things, we wouldn't get sued by them for doing all these things. We don't want to agree to do all this stuff and then turn around and get sued at the same time. Now, I understood Mr. Pate couldn't sign that because he didn't have 100% of his residents wanting to do this deal, okay? But we sent back eight...
But we sent back eight times, and every time Mr. Parsons reached out to me, we took something out that they didn't like and we changed it. We extended the time for the covenants to last. We extended the, we put a repeat cycle in. So we did everything we were asked to do, we made all the changes we were asked to do. And so those new things tonight are new to me. Now, the second part of that is, um, the second part of that is, is that I'm glad Mr. Holmes explained that to you, that this committee's place is not to decide whether the covenants are legal or not. We have a legal argument that we believe, like Mr. Busby said, that our folks effectively are the declarant because they are the people to whom this, this portion of the covenants works. Now, the other thing that, and so we believe that, my, my, my talented colleague, my senior colleague there, uh, um, he, he disagrees, and that's something that the judge can take up when we get there. But I don't really think that's an issue here. I mean, I think we both have our, our ideas, but I, but I think the bottom line is, the question you have is, and the question, why hasn't Dr. Pruthy done this in all this time? Well, Dr. Pruthy wasn't in charge of all this until Dr. Pruthy's son, actually, Dr. Pruthy is here as his attorney in fact, wasn't in charge of all this till that time. And I, I will just tell you, I have called numerous builders. Dr. Pruthy has called practically every builder in town because when we were doing research about this, I'd explain what we're doing, he said, oh yeah, he called me about, you know, putting houses in there, but it can't be done. Now, sure, there may or may not be increased costs with commercial, but that doesn't matter because what it says is, is it uneconomical. The question, they're already out of the PUD. The PUD is not an issue anymore. The zoning board, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission took them out of the PUD. The question is here, should they be rezoned? And to come back to that, the issue you have is that this council and this body has already created Tuscaloosa Ford. You've already said that that should be commercial, that that should be land and businesses that create property taxes for this, and that's what it ought to be, and that's what we're asking to do. All the rest of this stuff is, sometimes they told me tambourine man, they want you to look at the tambourine while something else is going over here. No. Reality is, Dr. Pruthy and his family cannot build anything on that that's residential. It's out of the PUD, now they want to change the zoning to conform with the city's plan. So we ask for your support in doing that, and I think we're happy to keep, put, put all this on the record of what we offered to do. We want everybody to know what we offered to do, and we will abide by that record. And last thing, last thing, they said, we don't know what's going to happen if he sells it. What we said we would do is that we would put new restrictive covenants on these, on this parcel that said it was the benefit, for the benefit of the other side. That means we couldn't change it, we'd have to abide it, and it would run with the land and that the owners would be bound by that restrictive covenant. That protects these folks in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Winter. Yes, Mr. Yes, Mr. Parsons, you have three minutes. Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All right, again, this is a public hearing and about to close the public hearing now, unless there's anyone else from the community that would like to speak. Okay? All right. Are there any questions, uh, from our colleagues on the council, uh, to Mr. Pons, Mr. Holmes, anyone, um, any, anyone have any comments? Again, this is the Zone Amendment 1506 to rezone 3.92 acres. Okay? Now, this is rezoning, annex comes later. This is just rezoning on, the way I'm told, Cam, and that the annex.
So, we, we prezone the property to be in, and they have 90 days to go and annex the city, annex into the city, otherwise it just all falls, it just all goes away.
The zoning does not take effect until the, until the annexation comes in, but it would prevent them from coming in automatically as, as R1.
Exactly. So that way, when it comes in as R1 and then they don't pursue a rezoning, that's where issues occur.
Okay? All right, close this public hearing and, um, voting with Counselor Lanier. I know, I know, it's, take your time.
No.
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 Yes.
It fails three to two. No's three, yes two. Okay? Thank you all. Forty-two, I'm sorry. All right, uh, clerk, resolutions and ordinances not of a general nature of permanent operation?
This approves a less than seven-day special events retail license at DKE Parents Weekend.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, Mr. Mills.
Okay, counsel, the next three applications I have is for the same applicant, it's for Downtown Entertainment LLC, applying for a special retail less than seven days. Uh, alcohol, unnecessary reports have been filed with the city clerk office. Officer Champion will give his report followed by the applicant to answer any questions you may have.
Hey, Officer Champion? Um, Mr. Holmes, let me ask like we've done before, since the first three are all, um, fraternities, sororities, can we do all the reports at one time?
It sounds like it is all right with, uh, Madam Parliamentarian, so I believe you can get all the information at once and then vote on the three in a row.
Okay, Officer Champion.
The next three, like you said, are all from the same subject. We have no problems with any of them. They're all Mr. Hanks' group, uh, 946 University Boulevard, had no instance listed, heat map within a quarter mile, top crimes listed within that quarter mile. Same thing for Joe Malasham Parkway, no instance listed, heat map, have one arrest out there within that quarter mile. March 10th, 2022, March 10th, 2023, for 946 University Boulevard, no instance listed, heat map within a quarter mile, top crimes listed within that quarter mile.
Carry those.
That's it, that's all of them.
Okay? That's the first three, correct? Hey, make sure I'm right. Okay, voting with, um, Counselor Howard on the first one.
You want to bring the applicant up?
Oh.
Oh, yeah, Brandon, I'm sorry.
He's been sitting here, sitting here for this exhilarating conversation so far.
Do you really want to come up?
Not really. Not after that. Brandon Hanks with Downtown Entertainment, 504 21st Avenue, Tuscaloosa, 35401.
Okay, this is, uh, for the DKE Parents Weekend, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 And the application is approved. Um, next is the Zeta Tau Alpha.
This approves a less than seven-day special events retail license at the Zeta Tau Alpha Barnyard Night Two.
Okay, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And that most applications.
Mr. Tanner, hey, we're going to need a motion and a second individually for each one.
We didn't do a motion and a second?
No, we did not.
You know, I'm just, that last thing just took it all out of me, let me get refocused here. Okay, we have a motion and a second, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, clerk?
This approves a less than seven-day special events retail license at the DKE A-Day Tailgate.
So moved. Second.
Have motion second, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries, I'm back now. Back in the game. All right, clerk?
This approves a less than seven-day special events retail license at the 2023 UA Coaches Clinic.
All right, Mr. Mills?
Okay, counsel, again, I have three applications.
Mr. Tanner, I'm sorry, can we get a motion and a second?
I'll second. Y'all come on and help me out here. I'm going to make, can I make a motion and a second?
It's a lost cause.
Yeah.
Where's Arnold?
I'll play it right now.
Can we have a motion second, Mr. Mills?
All right, counsel, this is, uh, I have three applications for Party Down LLC, applying for a special, uh, re, events retail license less than seven days. All necessary reports are with the city clerk's office. Officer Champion will give his report followed by the applicant to answer any questions you may have.
Officer Champion?
That last one should have went first.
Arnold has left the building.
He's gone.
1202 Coliseum Drive, there's no instance listed for location, heat map within a quarter mile, top crimes we had listed within that quarter mile.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, is he the applicant? For the Coaches Clinic, please come up, come forward. I didn't see you back there. Name and address for the record, please.
Lauren Sheemaker, 13800 War Road, Cottondale, Alabama, 35453.
Okay, this is the annual clinic, correct?
Yes, sir. Do it every year.
Every year?
Every year.
Okay. All right, any questions? Voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, are you, are you, you, you're up for the next three?
Yes, sir.
Next two. All right, clerk?
This approves a less than seven-day special events retail license at the Law School's 50th Anniversary Gala.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay? Well, not from you. But you could ask if you'd like.
I'm tired too.
I know, I am too. Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, clerk?
This approves a less than seven-day special events retail license at the DKE 175th Annual Alumni Weekend.
So moved.
Have motion second, voting with Counselor Howard? Lanier?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor Howard.
You will.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Clerk?
This will approve a downtown riverfront overlay district for 2135 University Boulevard.
So moved.
Have motion second, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries, clerk?
This will approve a downtown riverfront overlay district for 550 Greensboro Avenue.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, clerk?
This will rescind the previous resolution awarding competitive bid for half-ton full-size crew cab four-by-four trucks and rejects all bids.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries, clerk?
This authorizes a minor public works contract with Straight Line Fence LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Motion carries, clerk?
This tentatively awards a public works contract to John Platt Company Incorporated for the Western Riverwalk Project.
Move adoption.
Second.
Have motion second, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, clerk?
This authorizes the chief financial officer to draw drafts for the Wantita Drive Phase Two Improvements Project property acquisitions.
Move adoption.
Second.
Motion second, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries, clerk?
This will authorize the purchase of vehicles from Stivers Brothers Automotive of Alabama.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Motion carries, clerk?
This will authorize a contract with Axon Enterprise Incorporated and declare a bid law exemption.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries, clerk?
This will authorize negotiation of an aviation hangar and ground lease with PWMM LLC at the Tuscaloosa National Airport.
So moved.
Motion second, do we have a second?
Second.
Voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, clerk?
This authorizes execution and application to the U.S. Department of Justice through the Bureau of Justice Assistance for Fiscal Year 2023 Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program Grant.
Move adoption.
Second.
Motion second, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, clerk?
This will authorize budget and program changes to the 2021 Action Plan of the City's Five-Year Consolidated Plan for Community Planning and Development Programs for 2020 through 2024.
Move adoption.
Second.
Motion second, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Motion carries, clerk?
This adopts the Home ARP Allocation Plan and authorizes submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development as an amendment to the city's 2021 Annual Action Plan.
Move adoption.
Second.
Have motion second, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes? Motion carries. Why? We go and vote.
This is a double, this is a double vote.
We, this, well, it's a paddle boarding.
I got lost.
The music's coming back.
Okay, clerk?
This authorizes execution of a permit with Tuscaloosa Paddleboard Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Motion carries, clerk?
This temporarily expands the Downtown Entertainment District hours for Saturday, March 25th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, clerk?
This will tentatively select CCR Architecture and Interiors for professional consulting services.
So moved.[1595.51]
Second.
Motion second, vote with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, clerk?
This will authorize execution of an automatic aid agreement with Carol's Creek Volunteer Fire Department.
So moved.
Motion, motion and a second, vote with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Motion carries, clerk?
This will authorize an extension of the programmatic agreement between the city of Tuscaloosa and the state of Alabama Historic Preservation Office.
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Have motion second, vote with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, a call for suspension of the rules?
Suspend the rules?
Second.
Have motion second, clerk?
This will annex approximately thirty-nine point eighty-five acres located south of ninety-five eleven Highway eighty-two West and west of ninety-two hundred Energy Lane.
Okay, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'm recusing from this vote.
Yes?
Mr. Tyner, can we get a motion and a second first?
I'm sorry, I thought we had one. Have a motion second, vote with Counselor Howard?
Uh, yes.
Mr. President, I'm recusing from this vote.
Groundhog Day. Uh, yes?
Yes.
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 Now, can we do unanimous with the recusal?
Yes.
Okay, go hear a call for unanimous consent.
Second.
Call for unanimous consent, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Mr. President, I'm recusing from this vote.
Yes.
And it is unanimous. Uh, auditing the counts?
This authorizes the payment of bills.
Pay my bills.
Pay my bills?
Second.
Have motion second, pay my bills, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, any citizens' comments and other communications? I do believe we have a Zoom call from Ms. Miller about the animal outreach Tuscaloosa. Welcome?
Thank you, can you all hear me?
We can.
Yes. Perfect, awesome. Um, yeah, so I just wanted to come and present to you guys my, um, plan of making an outreach program that I am making animal outreach to Tuscaloosa, Tuscaloosa, so for sure A O T. Um, as someone who's always been involved with animal volunteering, um, I wanted to do more for the community that I live in now. Um, so I've spoken a little bit with Councilwoman Howard and Counselor Tyner, um, just through email about kind of what I want to do. Um, so the, what is A O T? So Animal Outreach Tuscaloosa is a public outreach pro, program that promotes basic pet education for lower-income districts in order to educate pet owners, um, providing the best quality of life for their animals. So kind of where I saw this coming to play I was working as a vet tech and also living right on the border between districts one and two. I feel like a lot of the issues that we see come through the clinic are just a lack of education on the client's part, which is no fault of their own, um, but something that I feel like could be easily attainable through an outreach program for people with animals. Um, so the target audience would be, um, people who have lower-income households, but that also have pets. Um, and that's our target audience because we believe that lower incomes should not equal a lower, lower quality of life for your pet. Um, so the goal is to basically reach out to the community and provide high-quality life education to their pets, um, even if they're on a budget. So they will provide citizens with education about the cheapest ways to get flea and tick medication, vaccines, anything like that. Um, and even with things that like people can afford, at least be educated on what can happen. So if you can't afford flea and tick medication, um, say you at least know the symptoms of potentially having a disease or an issue if your cat, dog, or whatsoever would have these or ticks. Um, so basically, we just want to keep everybody in the know and have information on Tuscaloosa's pet laws as well. Um, because I know Counselor Howard said that that can be an issue sometimes, so that would be something that we would put in there as well for people to stay up to date and know what they can and can't do with their pets, keep them safe and all that stuff. Um, and as the person who is the founder of A O T, um, I just wanted to let you all know that I do have a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, and a license, um, in veterinary technology. So I feel like I have the credentials to start something like this. Um, and I definitely want to educate and help the community.